Dan Felder, Boo, Maniscalco, Citro, Miranda, Carlson.
Here.
Vera.
Here. Okay, it appears that we're on item seventy-six. It appears that the staff who is here for item eighty-one has to leave shortly, so I'm going to, unless any council members have any objections, proceed with eighty-one, just for the courtesy of staff that are on a clock. So, who's here for item number eighty-one? Are they here?
Yeah, the housing authorities here.
Housing authority?
And Kristen.
And Ms. Moore, do you go first, or do you have any preference?
Kristen Moore, Legal Department. I have submitted a report to City Council, sort of outlining the legal requirements, the finding of any human remains or unmarked burial sites is a matter that is solely within the province of the state. There is a specific procedure provided in the statute. Now, I'll be even louder. There is a specific procedure in the statute. When that happens, it is a felony to not comply with those procedures. It is a misdemeanor to know about someone not complying with those procedures and fail to report that to law enforcement. So, the best thing that City Council can probably do to make sure that people know what to do in these types of situations is to make sure that the word is out there about what the statute requires and how the compliance is completed with it. It's as simple as notifying the medical examiner and the statute follows from there. So, I am available if you have any other questions on that.
Any questions for Ms. Moore, Councilman Gooz?
I guess my big overall concern is, I understand it's a state issue, per se, but my concern is, when notified, how does the city make sure that people are in compliance in reference to notifying the state? Or if we're giving building permits or doing, is it something that we should have in our context, if you've got a building permit, if these are happening, if this is uncovered, so people know what to do, how to do it? So, that's my big thing. What policies do we have in place? If we're giving people permits to do whatever, that way we can say there's a process. So, that's my concern, the community was to, what is a process that is in place? And I still don't think we have a process. We're just saying it's a state, a Florida issue versus the City of Tampa is giving permits for people to do work. So, what is that for you? That's what I'm looking at.
So, I discussed this at some length with staff to ascertain how often this has come up, and it just hasn't. The situations where it has come up has been here in downtown, where we could sort of anticipate this type of thing. And I was also informed that when these things do come up, they are just as likely to come up outside of the development process as during the development process. Someone's digging in their backyard, they could come across something, a new pipe's being laid, and right of way, things can be found. Or a lot of times, in large real estate transactions, they will do a study and they will find things as a result of those environmental studies. So, these issues often present themselves outside of the development process, and I think a rational person's first response to finding human remains without having known that they were going to be there would be to contact law enforcement. So, that's probably where the city's best line of defense lays, is to make sure that law enforcement, everyone at TPD is aware of what to do if these types of calls come in.
Counselman, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
And again, do we know if TPD knows what that process is?
I don't know the answer to that, Al Pan. I do know that we have the ability to write legal memorandums and pass those around, and so we could do something like that to make sure that all the officers are aware of what to do if they were presented with one of these types of issues.
I think that would be, you know, the route to go, that people will know what to do. You're right, it can be outside to where it could not be developed, because somebody's backyard.
Right.
But still remains what is still the city's first line to pass on the buck, if you want to say. So, that's what I'm looking for, something that's gonna give a clear window of, we got a call, this is what happening, now we're gonna respond and say it needs to go here, here, and here.
Right.
We gotta clear on that one, Al. Thank you.
Counselman Dingfelder.
Ms. Gooz makes a good point. Ms. Moore, I think you and perhaps your successor might consider an ordinance, a minor ordinance tweak or new ordinance that would address this in the development process. I mean, obviously, if somebody's digging around in their backyard, you know, putting in shrubs or something like that, and they came across something, hopefully, they'd do the right thing. But it's not a whole lot the city could control, per se, more than the state already does. But in the development process, if somebody is doing work and they come across something like that, and they have knowledge or actual, actual knowledge or otherwise, that I think a stop work order should be available to the building department under the code to, until such time as that builder, developer, whoever pulled that permit, can show the city that they have complied with the state statute. We don't need to rewrite the statute, it's already there. But we need to make, ensure on a local level, the same way we do with a lot of state statutes, that there is compliance. And even though it might not come up much on these types of situations where it's a very important situation, I think it's really critical to the community that no further work proceeds until such time as there's proof of compliance with state law.
So, I certainly hear what you're saying, but that is within the area that is truly preempted to the state. It is not the authority of the building official. The building official only has the power to enforce the building code. This is completely outside of that. It is actually the local medical examiner that has the power and authority and is authorized fully under the statute by its explicit terms to stop all activity at the site, not even just building activity, all activity at the site has to cease. And it is the medical examiner, or if passed from the medical examiner to the state archaeologist, then that duty to reauthorize work passes to the state archaeologist. But it's solely within their province. It would be outside of the city's province to issue stop work orders or try to control on that basis. That's not something that's within our purview. That goes to the medical examiner.
So, you've already done all the research on this, and that's your opinion. We don't have the ability to do anything in ordinance related to this.
I, that is not my read of how the statute and everything lays out with it, no. I think that this is something that is within the state's province.
Do they, does the statute specifically say, is it one of those preemption statutes? Does it say, "Local government shall not"?
It does, it does not. It does not say that explicitly, but it spells out exactly the procedures and covers completely the territory that you're discussing, which is the stopping of activity and then the reauthorization of activity.
Yeah, but I-
Well, if we're not precluded expressly, then I would say perhaps under home rule we could. But anyway, I don't wanna get into legal argument over the dais with you, but maybe it's something we could explore a little bit further.
You could explore it further, but the statute is, when you do have preemption, when you have the state completely occupying an area by their terms, that acts as a type of preemption as well. And this is one of those areas where they are very explicit in their terms of who has authority and who has jurisdiction for what things.
Counselman-
I hear what you're saying, and I respect your opinion, but I'm looking at, someone's digging right now and finds something, they're gonna call the police first. They're gonna call the police first. It may take a week, a couple of days, I don't know how long before the state to put a stop order on a bill, I don't know. But I just feel that if the police are called and we find remains or whatever, we should have the powers of home rule to say, "Hey, let's stop this process until we get the other process going." Not intervening with the state process, but saying, "Okay, this is our process, our law enforcement will call here in our city, we're saying hold the brakes until we make sure that the proper people have been notified." And then we can proceed however, however, what the statute says, but I contend the contention that we can stop right there, because if there was a homicide on a building, we stop everything. We don't continue until we follow the steps to continue. So, I still contend that I think that we could have an ordinance or policy put in place to where if we respond or something is found in the city, we can say, "Hold the brakes until we notify the proper people," you know, be it OSHA, be it the medical examiner comes out, but we hold the brakes until we can proceed or they can proceed further.
Well, and Counselman, I don't disagree with that point. That's why I mentioned that TPD is our line of defense on this. It is a felony for them to continue. So, it would be appropriate for us to make sure the TPD is informed that when they do go out to these, that, you know, the medical examiner needs to be contacted, that's the correct procedure. But also, they can tell everyone, "You do need to stop, because it would be a felony for you to continue." And then they can make arrests on that basis, if necessary, if they refuse to listen. And I think that that's, that's the proper way under the statute, and I think that that is the best way for the city to implement it through what's authorized by the legislature.
Counselman Carlson.
If the, if I read the intent of my colleagues, it's to be respectful to the people who were buried there. One alternative might be, one alternative suggestion might be, besides whatever you mentioned, is to look at what we could do afterwards. I don't know how far the statute goes, but, you know, how do we pay homage to the people who were there? How do we, how do we find whatever information there is about them? How do we display it? I think there are probably areas there that we could control, and then that would, that would not just show respect for the remains, but then show respect afterwards and try to maintain the heritage. Do we know, and maybe I missed this in the story, but do we have any idea why this was lost? Why did, why did it drop off the books or the history books?
It's always difficult to know what exactly happened historically. I'm actually gonna let the housing authority respond to this particular situation, because they, they have been extremely involved and they have been working very difficult, very hard in a difficult situation to identify exactly what the issues are out there. With respect to your question about what we can do after the fact, there probably is some room. The statute does provide jurisdiction to the state and to the archaeologists over those. They have the ability to claim that jurisdiction. But the city would have the ability to try and find avenues to see that those, you know, if there's artifacts, for example, that those are, that those are probably taken care of. The human remains themselves, though, all have to be either re-interred or studied in accordance with the statute. But I will let the housing authority respond to this particular situation, since they are much more up to speed on the particulars of this than I am.
Anyone else? And just a comment from me personally, I mean, what I'm sensing from Councilman, especially from what Councilman Carlson has said and Councilman Gooz has talked about this, which is, if we can't get a hold of what happens as a city, to the extent that it's unnecessary and there's already state provisions that deal with it, we want to do something on a moral basis to commemorate those who came before us. I mean, we all just recently observed August twentieth, which many of us learned, I learned, I never knew that, was four hundred years ago, on August twentieth, sixteen nineteen, was the first documented time of Africans coming to the, what would become the United States, to Virginia, twenty-two. And that's, I think that right now, I'll just be blunt, with the political environment the way that it is, and with an increasing, let's say, tolerance of intolerance that is public, I think there's a real hunger out there, and I share that hunger, to commemorate our history and to show people, those who came before us and the relevancy that they have to us here today, and to show us that the intolerance that we see today is not new and it's been with us for too long, and it's something that we have to overcome. And so, I think that's what this is a part of, in my opinion, so. But I would love to have our friends from Tampa Housing Authority speak, they're ready.
Been patient all morning, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to thank Councilman Gooz for pointing that out as well, so thank you, sir.
Leroy Moore, Chief Operating Officer, was initially going to give this report, we had to leave for another meeting. I'm Lilian Stringer, Director of Community Affairs. And just to start off on the right foot, let me just give you a little bit of specifics about Robles Park. It's the seventh oldest public housing community preceded only by Collet Hill Homes, Ponce Leon, Lincoln Village, Riverview Terrace, Central Park Village, and North Boulevard Homes. It's located at thirty-eight fourteen Central Avenue. It is four hundred and thirty-three low-rise family units, and it was built in nineteen fifty-four. Through progressive and, I guess, moderately accurate reports by the Tampa Bay Times is how this information came to us. And we got the phone call in April of twenty nineteen. A reporter said that they discovered graves at the current Robles Park at the site. That was the first time that we heard of it. So, almost a half a century ago, in November nineteen fifty-one, is when these bodies were discovered. And so, we have worked with crews now to begin ground penetrating radar. They completed that study earlier this week. We don't have the results yet, we expect to have those back sometime in October, at which time we will definitely share with you what the findings might be. Should it, we find that there are indeed caskets there or bodies there, the residents that are occupying that particular half of, not half, but a third of the property, will be relocated to other communities. Let's see. There's no sign today that a cemetery once occupied the two and a half acres, and that's what comprises Robles Park, two and a half acres. There are only five buildings that we're discussing now where those bodies were, or the caskets were discovered, only five buildings. And those would be the ninety-six people that would have to be relocated because of the finding here. After reviewing thousands of historical records and conducting dozens of interviews, reporters have identified death certificates for three hundred and eighty-three people who were buried at the cemetery from nineteen thirteen to nineteen twenty. When all of this was going on, I was just two years old, I didn't have any idea, none of us did. But we wanna do the right thing, we wanna be respectful of the deceased that are there. And so, what we'd like to do is to incorporate a memorial wall, listing all the names of all the people that the Tampa Bay Times has discovered that were there, and we would want to do that memorial there for that, for those folks. It would be just the right thing to do. One of the questions has been asked that, you know, why move people? Why can't people stay on the cemetery site? Well, because we can do better, and we know to do the right thing, and this is what we endeavor to do. So, we have formed, after learning of all of this information, the housing authority formed a consultation committee to work with us, and they are comprised of ten community members, including archaeologists from USF and a company called Cordno, who did our ground penetrating radar. So, we wanna just, like I said, respect the bodies, erect a memorial, and just do the right thing. And that's basically all I can tell you, until we get the results back, and that's where we are at this point.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Gooz.
I see Mr. Ryan is in the building. Thank you for taking the time out to come. What I would like to say to my colleagues that, when the housing authority did learn of this situation, they jumped right on it, they didn't linger and wait. We are very appreciative of that. I know the community is appreciative, we jumped on it. I have been to one of the meetings with the archaeologists group, and also they have community engagement at the meeting as well, and they're really trying to get their hands on it and hear what the community has to say. So, I want to commend the organization for jumping on that, inputting reports that we asked for.
Thank you. Jerome Ryan's Tampa Housing Authority. It was quite disturbing, we read this information in the newspaper, too, and we felt an obligation to do something about it, and that's kind of what we're doing. We're also working with the city, too. It's a coordinated effort. But I wanna make sure that we all understand that we're gonna do whatever we need to do to make sure that we take care of the problem and solve the problems of the residents, in addition to making sure that we do whatever is necessary to respect the situation over there.
May I add just one thing, please? There was a meeting tonight at the property for all of the residents at Robles Park. We are-
Not necessarily all of it, just the residents in those five or six buildings that we're doing, yeah.
Yeah, because we wanna, if there is a problem with trauma, or I can't sleep because of ghosts, or I fear this, we've already contacted people who can counsel them. So, all of that is happening now. And so, we'll be meeting tonight. All the residents have received letters from the housing authority stating what has happened and why we're doing this. So, no one is in the dark, but tonight we'll have a question and answer period for the residents who may have to move.
Is that on the property?
It's on the property. It's about five or six, it's a reading with the residents, it's about five or six buildings on the property. There's about sixty-eight buildings there total. So, and there's five or six buildings where there might be a problem, we're not sure. And until we get all the information, all the facts, we're not prepared to discuss that at this point. And hopefully, next week or two, we'll have all of that information.
What time is the meeting tonight?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
In the community room, right next door to the office.
It's with the residents, have a meeting with them and kind of give them an update on what's going on over there.
Counselman Minuscalco.
You know, I have to give credit to Paul Gooz with the Times for, you know, writing this article. I know he worked on it for a long time. I knew he was working on something, but he kept it very hush-hush, and rightfully so, because, you know, the individuals that are here on this property, you know, whatever, if it's one or if it's a hundred, whatever it is, you know, they deserve their respect, you know, just like anybody else. And this is far too important, and to echo what Councilman Gooz said, thank you for being so responsive. You know, you jumped on it, you know, we're not wasting any time, we're not making excuses to do what's right for these people. I mean, these are pioneers, you know, these are people that, you know, we don't know how old the graves are, but, you know, from the beginning, you know, when Tampa was first being built, you know, the Robles property, the Robles name is very significant, but, you know, everyone deserves equal respect. So, I'm glad that we're doing what's right by then.
Absolutely. It was quite disturbing to us, too, to know that, and the newspaper reported an excellent job of laying out all the details and all the information, and it kind of gave us a starting point, because we were unaware of any of this, too. I was a twinkle in my mother's eye at the time this happened.
Counselman Dingfelder, then Counselman Carlson.
Thank you all for coming and giving us an update on this important topic. As a related subject, you all have mentioned the possible relocation of certain folks who might live in those five buildings. I had heard, at least four or five years ago, that Robles was potentially, you know, gonna be redone, or, you know, as you've done such a good job in other, other projects that sort of have reached their life, that Robles was one of those. And it's not the most wonderful facility, I'm sure. So, what, just as related to this and generally for the community, what's the status of Robles?
Yeah, that is our next priority. Robles Park is the number one priority for us now. We've gotten started, we've, at the Central Park, North Boulevard, and all of that. So, Robles Park is our next number one priority. It'll be several years, probably three or four more years, before we do anything in that area. But this may cause us to have to hasten the process, to be quite honest with you.
One of the reasons that Robles is the last property we're gonna work on is because it's one of the most affordable properties. And when you're in relocation, you don't, residents don't often have funds to go and move into another apartment, you know, they wanna go someplace else, they have to go to another public housing community. And so, since Robles was the most affordable, we save that one. So, when we do relocation, that is one of the options, to go to Robles or to go on an assisted housing voucher someplace else.
And we pay for all the relocation costs.
I'm wondering, I know traditionally, you guys have kind of leveled everything and then rebuilt everything all at once, and I'm just wondering, maybe if you phased it in, then that way, if somebody has to move, you know, they might be able to move over here and not have to move too far, and then phase them back into something new, as opposed to like, all and then, you know.
Interesting you say that, that is one of our major options, right, at this point? We're looking at the possibility of doing just that.
Yeah.
Phasing it in, yeah.
Great mind takes a lot, thank you.
And to add on to that, you know that the need for affordable housing is so great in this community. I get calls all day long about people, I mean, it just tears my heart out. People are sleeping in their cars, there's no place to go. You know, I went to a conference in Boston about three weeks ago, and in Boston, they have a hundred public housing unit, communities. Out of the hundred units, I keep saying units, out of the hundred communities, they only have seventy-five of those that have property left to even build affordable housing on. A one-bedroom apartment in a public housing community in Boston is twelve hundred dollars a month. A two-bedroom is thirty-six hundred dollars. So, can you just imagine? So, once they are able to get in, they're not getting out. And so, it's, and we need to do something here in this city and this county for affordable housing. I applaud all of those developers and building, construction companies who are building these high-rise communities, these luxury condos over here, but they're forgetting about people who just need plain old affordable housing. And so, that is something that we should certainly start to take a look at.
And it's not a problem that's peculiar to Boston, it's a problem that's peculiar to most major cities in this country, and it is, it's a very expensive venture. Some developers are trying to do something about it, and we're fortunate here in this city that there's a number of people that understand the need, and I think at some point in town, we'll get some things done. And I think working with the city and working with the county, I think we will get some things done. I think we've gotten some things done. But it's such a major need. I think people assume that everybody that moves to the Tampa Bay area is gonna make a hundred thousand dollars a year. Well, that's not the case. You know, we talk to people every day that make it far, far, far less, and it's difficult for them to find a place to move to. We're probably, we're the major affordable housing agency in this community.
Thanks.
Even with our mixed-income neighborhoods, we're still the, we're still the top, at the top of the heap.
One of the neat things about Robles is its location is really a great location. I mean, I mean, you wanna talk about central, centrally located and, you know, MLK in Florida and transportation, and really, you know, I could see it as a real TOD opportunity, transit or development opportunity, when you do rebuild. It's a, you know, it's a great location, and that's what folks in that income bracket need also. They need public transportation, too.
Thank you.
And everybody can't afford to be a homeowner, either. That's the other side going to, that we have to think about. Everybody can't be a homeowner. Some of the homes are just too expensive, and everybody can't afford to live down there.
Counselman Carlson.
Yeah, based on the discussions that we've had previously in this board and the workshops we've had, I think we are setting affordable housing as a high priority, so I look forward to partnering with you all, hoping also that we'll start to look at the CRA money and figure out how we can, you know, follow the statute and focus more on affordable housing there. But just to also echo what Councilman Maniscalco said, thanks to Paul Gooz for covering the story, but thanks also to his editors in the Times for investing the time in covering history and culture, because, you know, that, as he knows better than any of us, maybe, that's what defines our community, and this whole story would have been lost without that.
Absolutely.
And one last little plug, I've seen a bunch of people complain lately about the five dollars or seven dollars a month they have to pay to get past the firewall for the Times, and that sixty or eighty dollars a year is what pays for us to uncover huge stories like this that are critically important to our community. So, please, if you can, you know, pay it and let's support our local media outlets.
Yep, rightfully so. Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for being responsive. This is, this is too big of an issue to, you know, to set aside, and we're doing the right thing.
So, let me add, too, that the mayor's been extremely cooperative. She's made affordable housing one of her number one priorities, and we're glad to see that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we're jumping back to item seventy-six, but we have a memo from Assistant City Attorney Kristen Moore regarding a continuance.
Yes, thank you. Item number seventy-six. We are requesting that this be continued until September nineteenth.
All right, would anybody in the public like to speak to the continuance? No, saying none?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
In looking at this, and my assistant Annette looking at it, even though I was on the variance review board as an alternate back then, it does not appear that I was present on this particular evening that they voted on this. So, with that, I'll feel comfortable voting on the continuance. I don't see your name on there, either, Mr. Citro.
Word, no, that's not, excuse me, Mr. Chair, seventy-six is not a variance review board issue.
Hi, just as a point of clarification, there is an underlying variance that was, that this went with. So, I will need to go back, that's an excellent point, Counselman Dingfelder, thank you. I will go back, and when this comes back to you on the nineteenth-
Okay.
-I will have ascertained who, if anyone, needs to recuse themselves on it.
Stand corrected. Thank you, Counselman Dingfelder.
And if I can, for the benefit of the record, this being a required continuance, would you agree because it hadn't been noticed? Is that, is that the issue?
This was not noticed, but the requests for relief themselves do not require notice. The underlying recommendations require notice, so we ask that they be noticed.
I see.
So, the request for relief itself should be continued, the underlying potential approval, if council entertains the request for relief, is what would be noticed.
Well, I guess my question is, then, the council really does not have discretion in the sense that I'm looking to see whether this is purely a ministerial action of council therefore it doesn't require any conflict or abstaining.
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It's a pleasure, counsel.
So, move.
All right, we have a motion to continue from, wait, did I need to close the public?
No, it's a continuance.
Okay. We have a motion for a continuance to September nineteen, twenty nineteen, at ten-thirty a.m. from Counselman Citro, second from Counselman Gooz, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, number seventy-seven, we did, and now we go to number seventy-eight for a petition for review. All right. Number 77, we did. And now we go to number 78, for a petition for review.
Mr. Chair, on both items 78 and 79, I was chair of the variance review board at those times. I am submitting my 9B.
8B.
8B, excuse me. 8B paperwork, and I am excused.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Councilman.
We just asked that, Madam Clerk, that he be noted as abstaining on both. Thank you.
And Councilman Dingfelder, I have reviewed the minutes for both of these two items, and you were not present for either one of these hearings.
Good. All right. So number 78.
Number 78 is a petition for review for a variance at 3605 West Platt Street. I have passed out to you the standard for review, as well as section 2780 regarding the application of the variance power. This is a de novo review. And I am available if you have any questions. Otherwise, Ms. Twanda Anthony will address you regarding the facts of this individual case.
Hello, Council. Twanda Anthony, Land Development. Again, as legal stated, this is an appeal of the variance review board. This is for application number VRB 1928. The property is located at 3605 West Platt Street. The applicant is Leon Ray Dean. The hearing date was February 12, 2019. The summary of the request is as follows. Per section 27-156 and 27-290, the applicant is seeking to reduce the side yard setback from seven feet to 1.1 feet, and the west side yard setback from three feet to 1.1 feet, to allow an existing detached garage and an awning to remain. The property is zone RS60, and was purchased in 1993. A single-family residence was built in 1941. According to Hillsborough County Property Appraiser, it appears that there was also a shed in the rear of the structure that was also constructed in 1991. Here's the aerial of the site. Here's the subject property, and West Platt Street. Here's a view of the front of the property. Here's a view facing west. And here's a view facing east. Here's the site plan. Here's the structure in the front of the property that is attached to the house, where they're asking to reduce the setback from seven feet to 1.1. And here's the structure in the rear, where they requested a reduction from three feet to 1.1 feet. At the variance review board hearing, the garage in the rear, the request was granted. What's before you today is the awning. It was not granted as part of the variance request. And the applicant is here now to discuss that request.
All right. Councilman Dingfelder, you have three photographs from the front of the house. Do you have a photograph of the subject awning?
Um, I do not.
Okay. So for future reference, if we're going to the trouble of taking the pictures, and we have the ability, let's try and go up the side there. I know, I know you can't go on the property to take pictures, but in this case, probably could have gone. Thank you.
All right. Applicant, Mr. McLeeny.
And before Mr. McLeeny begins, I just want to point out, for purpose of the record, he has submitted the DVDs of the VRB hearing. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Steve McLeeny. I don't think this time is right. Is it five minutes?
No.
Thank you. I was not the presenter at the original hearing. The property owners contacted me following that, because there was a lot of discussion and some confusion about what was being requested. Let me start by saying, there were two portions of this variance. One was for an existing garage that was built in 1941. And the VRB voted to, to grant that waiver as it was originally constructed. So that portion of the variance no longer is before you. What's before you is the awning that is in front of the, of the garage. And yes, Councilman, I do have a photograph of that in the proximity to the, to the property line. It would seem odd to me that, although, like I said, I wasn't at the hearing, but it seemed odd that there was a discussion about an awning that was in front of the garage, and yet they vested the garage. The house was built in 1941. The applicant was, been there since 79. And in 1995, there were revisions and renovations and remodeling that occurred at the house. And in 2001, they hired Creighton Brothers Awning Company to install a replacement awning for the house. And I'm going to show you when I say replacement awning. Let me show you what was there originally. Is that showing up on your screen?
Yes.
There were metal awnings surrounding the house. This is, you know, obviously, it's a fairly old photograph. But you can see that, that they were all around, around the The receipt is here from Creighton, Creighton Brothers Awning Company, that was paid in, in January of 2002. It was actually constructed and erected in 2001. And this is a licensed contractor. So in the process, I mean, you have to recall that these are laypeople, and they rely upon contractors representing that they'll have the necessary permits to construct such an awning. And here is the side view of the awning and the fence. And you can see the garage is in the background here. One other issue that was talked about was that there was a potential for stormwater runoff going on to an adjacent property owner. And the entire property is surrounded by six-inch gutters. And then you can see the awning just underneath the roof line there. In 1995, as I said, there, there was a remodeling that was done to the front of the house. And these are records from the city, by the way. This was fully permitted. But it, it does appear that the awnings were referenced in these remodeling permits that were issued, again, in 95. And you have to also recall, I mean, for the new council members, the codes changed in 1987. So when these property owners were coming back and trying to, to reinstall and remodel their existing awning, they, they were going to be held to a new code, which should have been picked up by the, the awning company, but for, for whatever reason, it wasn't. Here's another diagram of what the awning company proposed, basic drawings. Again, the codes have changed. You would not have been allowed to submit a drawing like that without footers and anchors, and more details regarding how that was to be constructed under the current code. So awnings take on a whole different purpose and meaning now. Instead of just a shade, they have energy efficiency qualities, as well as weatherproofing. And if you rely on that for a number of years, and again, nineteen years, almost nineteen years later, that they're issued a citation for an awning that's, that's been there, and the previous awnings were there. They were, they were reconstructed, they were slightly larger than what was there originally, but they were there. And I think that, in terms of, does it impact, I mean, just going through the, the criteria for, for a variance, and whether or not they meet that, the practical difficulties are that these awnings were there. They, they existed, they were rebuilt, they were reinstalled. They, apparently, you know, the property owner thought they were being installed according to the code, and with the proper permits and licenses by a licensed contractor. And I'll show you at the top of this page here, this is Creighton Brothers. They, they list their, their contractor number, CBC 033275. So they're left without any recourse, if they don't get a variance. And that is, you know, part of their criteria for hardship. They're out their $2,500 that they paid to have it constructed. They can't go back to the company and say, hey, you know, Creighton Brothers should be here before city council, saying, hey, we're sorry, please forgive us, we'll go back and get permits and do this correctly. The homeowner is now faced with having to do that. It wasn't something they created. They thought they were in compliance. With respect to the difficulties and practical difficulties, it removes a, a very important covering from the side of their house that they need to protect the west side. There were trees on the other side of the property that were removed illegally. They were cited for that. And then subsequently, they got, they got permits to, to address that issue. But that, that shade that was previously provided on the other side of the property, again, not their property, but the shade was there, is no longer there. Any action that they've taken has been to comply. They didn't try to avoid permitting. They didn't try to slip something by and say, hey, you know, they didn't do it themselves. It wasn't a Saturday night, or Friday afternoon, or Saturday afternoon kind of construction. They hired a legitimate company. Does it interfere with the health, safety, and welfare of anyone else? No. It's within their side of their property. And I showed you the picture where any runoff that could come off of that, the edge of that, the edge of the awning, goes into gravel, and then is transferred down to the front of the street. It's not encroaching past the property line. It's approximately 1.1 feet off of the property line. And removing that, or as the, one of the inspectors told her to do, if you just separate it from the house, then it would be okay. But that's not, that's not the case. You separate it from the house, it doesn't do anything. It's still an encroachment. They have done what they could do. It is a substantial hardship on them. If it's not approved, it would be significant in terms of expense, and their operating costs, in terms of driving their energy costs up at their house. It is serving the general intent of the code, when, when a property owner does try to comply, and basically is left to believe that everything is in order, only to find out that it's not. With respect to the health, safety, and welfare, there's no one else that's affected. I have a petition signed by various property owners that are adjacent to the property, who had no objection to this originally, back in February. I can certainly submit that for the record as well. There's six, six different property owners, and you see their addresses. One of them is a couple, so I guess it's five. I've searched all of the city records. I've asked for city staff assistance in searching the records to find any other permits, anything that they could have perhaps slipped through the cracks when they converted from handwritten permits over to electronic records. And the best we could come up with was the 1995 remodeling permit that shows an awning on that side. And then the photographs that show the awnings were there. And then, for whatever reason, Creighton Brothers either did pull a permit, and it's not in the records, or they didn't pull a permit, and led the homeowner to believe that it was there. I believe that we have met the criteria for substantial justice being done, for a hardship that exists that was not created by the homeowner. And it does not interfere with the health, safety, and welfare of anyone else, or the rights of any adjacent property owners. It is in full compliance in terms of, of relief that's being provided through the variance review process, and the appeal to Tampa City Council, and also with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. But it would be an extreme hardship on this family to have to remove this awning. And again, the garage that's behind it was already approved for the same setback. And I'll, and I'll give you the copy of the homeowner.
No questions from the board? All right. Do you have anybody in the public that would just speak on this case? Nobody from the public? Anything else, Mr. McLeeny?
No, sir. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at all?
Just, just to clarify, Mr. McLeeny, I've got your list here of Platt Street residents. I assume when she did her notice on the, not only on the variance itself, but on the appeal, that, is it your testimony or hers, that, that she did not hear back from anybody? Or that she did not hear back from anybody to the negative?
We did not hear back from anyone regarding this petition, positive or negative, except for the signatures that you have there, that were in support.
Both, both at the variance level and at the appeal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and one other question, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How did this originate? Was this, this just a code enforcement drive-by, or what?
It was a code enforcement action. I'm not sure exactly how it happened, but Platt Street is fairly busy, and I would expect that it was a potential drive-by. I don't know. And yes, for the record, I've been sworn.
Thank you very much. So anybody from the public, we have a motion to, to the motion from Councilman Guzzo, and Councilman Dingfelder. What is your pleasure?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll take a triad, because none of these cases are easy. Here's, if I remember what I read here, this house was built in 41. She bought it in 79 or something like that, if I remember the numbers that I read. And she hired a reputable contractor, which is Creighton, if I recall. And whether they did, didn't put a permit, or whatever, determined that they didn't, they, they built it. She paid 25, some hundred dollars to them, and now they're out of business. And, you know, if it was a house, and they were renting a house in the back, I would have a different appeal. But I feel that it's, I move to overturn the decision of variance review board and grant the variance as depicted on the site plan presented to this public hearing on August 22, the year 2019. And the variance is going back from seven feet to 1.1 feet, as it relies to 27-156, and the side backs, yard setback from three feet to 1.1 foot, as related to 27-290. And it's a hardship, and there's been substantial evidence to the necessary hardship presented difficulty when considering the five hardship criterias, in my mind, of section 2780 of the city code. And it's a hardship, because there's so many changes from 41 to 2019, it's hard for anyone to determine all the factual facts. And if we want to lean on the side of the owner of the house, that they did everything possible. And we still don't know how this became evidentiary to the court enforcement society. Usually, court enforcement is reactive, not proactive. That doesn't mean they're good or bad. But if somebody had to call somewhere, I don't think court enforcement would go into the house or to the property without being asked on. That's just my opinion.
All right. We have moved to the House and Miranda, and the second, Councilman Guzzo. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
We'll move on to item 79. We have a petition for review by Mr. Carlson. Good sir.
Kristin Mora, again. This is a petition for review of a decision of the variance review board. Again, for the record, counsel Dingfelder, you were not present at this hearing. It was not necessary for you to abstain in this matter. This is a, this is an appeal not of a denial, but of the condition that was placed on the approval. The board granted the approval with the condition that the balcony never be enclosed. This is a de novo review, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Just as, just as a point of order, Ms. Mora, I think, by my recollection, that I was here for a hearing as related to this property, must have been continued, I'm getting a nod from the petitioner, must have been continued, and then at the continuance, I was not at the subsequent meeting where the vote was taken. I don't know how you feel about that, or Mr. Shelby. I don't really recall much more beyond that. In typical fashion, I probably spoke. But anyway.
You did not participate in the decision, and I think the primary concern is the participation in the decision and then appeal to you when you participated in that decision. So...
I'll rely on your legal guidance and Mr. Shelby's legal guidance.
So, I think perhaps...
As related to a possible recusal, I have no desire to recuse myself. And as you say, I was not there for the vote.
That's correct. That, I agree with Ms. Mora. The question I have is, do you have any specific recollection of anything during that continuance that would cause you to be fair, anything but fair and impartial and render a decision today?
I can be fair and impartial.
Okay. Well, that being the case, I would agree with Ms. Mora that, under the circumstances, it would be your obligation to vote. Thank you. Carry on.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, ma'am.
To Wanda Anthony Land Development. As legal stated, this is an appeal of the variance review board. It's for application number VRB 1933. The property address is 7216 West Juanita Avenue. The applicant is Perry Sullivan. The hearing date was March 12th, 2019. The request was as follows. For section 27156, the applicant was seeking to reduce the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 14.6 feet to extend the existing rear balcony. The property is zone RS50 and was purchased in 2003. The house was built in 1989. Here's an aerial of the property. This is subject property. Here's South Juanita Street. Here's a view of the front of the property. Here's a view facing west. Here's a view facing east. And here's a view of the existing balcony. Here's a site plan. And here you can see the existing balcony, and the area in the hatched red is the extension that they're requesting the variance for today. Again, the variance was approved, but it was a condition on the variance that it was to never be enclosed, and they're here before you today to ask that the condition be overturned.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, ma'am. Petition? Yes, sir, Mr. Shelby?
Thank you. And for the record, Mr. Sullivan has provided a DVD of the lower board hearing for the record.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Sullivan. Like we stated before, a little part in red, we wanted to extend the balcony to make it usable, it's too small to do anything with. When we sent out the letters both times, there were no, first time, it was one person that came up, but he didn't understand. He just came for clarity. The second time, there was no one, no one even bothered to address what they were doing. And this is the balcony now. In a sense, what we want to do is about half the balcony, we want to close that part to have some safe zone against the mosquitoes and bugs and everything else outside. This shows the property. Enclosure would be up in here. This is, this is the next closest neighbor. There's just a jungle between the two. And this just shows the balcony radius. This part is what we're going to do, half of the enclosure. Any questions?
Counselman Dingfelder, please.
Put your two photos back there with the sun on the balcony. Show me the corner enclosure.
From here on, this part, just half the balcony, that went enclosed.
Put the other frame up for me.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Put the other frame up for me, the other photo.
This one.
Got a lake, or a lake in the back on that, on the top, towards the east, is that? Is that water in the back?
Not necessarily, essentially, you have mosquito hatchery. That's what it is, just swamp.
Counselman Dingfelder?
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, perhaps the confusion or the misunderstanding or disagreement is in the word enclosure. Because I haven't, I haven't sat on the VRB a couple of different times over many years. I always push very hard when somebody comes in for a porch, you know, I always push very hard to make sure that it doesn't become a room. But what you described a little earlier, you were saying screen, as in a screen porch.
A screen enclosure.
So maybe, are you talking about a roof?
Yes.
Of a hard roof, keep the rain out, with a screen porch around it?
Yes.
Not a, not windows, not, not, not walls, not windows?
Not windows.
If she wants to come forward, that's fine.
Applicant by...
It's up to you.
Sandra Campbell, 7216 South Juanita Street, property owner. Sorry. Yeah, I'm trying to improve my property because I'm down where Lenar is building. And I do want to enclose it and make it air-conditioned space.
You want to make it air-conditioned?
I definitely do. I mean, we talked about it, air conditioning, non-air conditioning, screen, non-screen, but at this point in time...
Did you speak to that with the VRB? Did you, did you make it clear to the VRB that you...
No, it was not made clear. I think that Mr. Sullivan and I had some type of a miscommunication because I always intended to enclose it. And I was shocked when they said never enclosed, which is, I think, in my opinion, pretty harsh. Also, if I ever want to resell my property, that variance goes with the property. So if my, somebody else bought my property, they couldn't enclose it either. I'm trying to do things to improve. This is the front of my house now. I've redone the driveway with pavers. This is the canal that you're talking about in the front. I've redone my kitchen. I'm just trying to make my property keep up with Lenar's. And the, the enclosure, I went to Anderson Aluminum, and they did this drawing for me. And it would be glass, so it would be like a Florida room. And because of the ingress egress, we couldn't enclose the entire deck because the bedroom sliding glass doors wouldn't allow the roof to be put over top of it.
Yeah, just one final thing, Mr. Chairman. I think the other, the other part of the confusion is, that came in, is the fact that it says to extend a balcony. I think when, when a body hears that word, especially the variance board, which deals with a lot of things about porches, balconies, that sort of thing, and especially seeing the picture, I think they just thought, well, you want to extend the balcony. And they, they look in your rear yard, and there's nobody in your rear yard, so it's like, there's no harm there, perhaps. But, but, but it's actually an extension, sort of a room extension. So I think perhaps that contributed. But anyway, that's, that's all I've got to say today. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Nothing else from the appellant, petitioner? Nothing else? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone here to publicly comment on item number 79?
Second.
Motion to close by counsel Miranda, second by counsel Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What is the pleasure of counsel?
Put you to work, Mr. Miranda. If I may, I'll take a stand back, and I'll tell you why. When I see this, it certainly, I understand what it said, never be enclosed. But then, when I look at the reality where the property is at, and the distance between the neighbor to the back, and if I saw the neighbor to the left side of the house, it wasn't enclosed, but they had a patio or something back there. I don't know if it was a patio, if it was a porch, or what it was, because I couldn't see any further than that. So, I, I just feel that the harm to anyone would be to her. There's no, there's a pond or something, a creek or something next to it. Then there's a bunch of trees, and then there's residents in the back. And I couldn't tell that any of the residents on the other side of the little thing by the driveway, the little ditch or pond, or whatever they want to call it. So I, I move to overturn the board's decision, the VRB to grant the variance as depicted on the site plan presented to the public at this public hearing on August 22nd of 2019. And based on the applicant's presenting competence, substantial evidence of the unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty with considering five hardship criterias set forth in section 2780 of the city code. And, and everything is based on location. Certainly, if this was in a neighborhood where you had back-to-back and shared fence and next door on both sides, and I would understand that. But in this case, I think this is an isolated property, not, not, I don't mean acres and acres, but I mean a property that by, by them doing this expansion does harm to no one. That's just my feeling.
Second. We have a motion by counselman Miranda, a second, I believe, first by counselman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we move to staff reports. We're under number 80, or resolution.
Good afternoon, city council. Jean Duncan, Transportation and Stormwater Services Department. I'm here for item 80, which is the awarding of a stormwater contract we're very excited about. This is almost a mile of a very large culvert that we'll be building that'll drain over 1,000 acres of a basin between 34th Street and 50th Street, south of Hillsborough Avenue. So we're potentially going to award the contract to JVS, very reputable contractor that was low bid, and here to seek your approval for that contract.
Any questions from the council? I guess, sir.
Quick comment. This comes to council out of, out of consent because it's $7 million, a big contract. But specifically, Jean, Ms. Duncan, if you could make reference from the cover page to the minority participation and your dedication to enforcing that.
Yes, we are showing that we've had, we have 16.8% of minority participation committed to this project, and we'll certainly make sure that is the case as the project gets underway.
Anything else? Okay, anyone would like to move the resolution?
Say, ma'am.
We have a motion by counselman Dingfelder, a second by counselman Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we move to item 82, I believe it is.
Good afternoon, council. Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. Mr. Callahan is passing out the city of Tampa's current tree matrix. And I wanted to let you know that the tree matrix was created in 2013 as part of the urban forest management plan. And the reason that the matrix was created was to be used as a tool for people to plant the right tree in the right place. The matrix was in cooperation with the University of Florida, Hillsborough County Extension, and numerous industry professionals to make sure that all trees on the list were appropriate for central Florida. The right tree, right place concept considers planting of trees in consideration of overhead utilities, underground utilities, and horizontal and vertical spaces, or spaces that the tree will be planted in. The matrix was formally adopted or codified July, no, June 1st, as part of the new tree and landscape ordinance. And I would like to turn this over to Mr. Callahan to, where are you, Mr. Callahan? There you are. To address the remaining comments in your motion.
Counsel Mike Callahan have been sworn. Counsel, I'm not sure exactly from an urban design standpoint, specifically for downtown. We have, as you may or may not know, we have a form-based code for, for our CBD. Each street has its own issues. It's, we've rated every street in the downtown as an A, B, or C street. A being priority pedestrian street, B street, a little bit less so, and then a C street, which is back a house. So trees fit on there with different spacings. We have a lot of considerations, existing conditions, utilities underneath, and perhaps overhangs up top. So, I'm not 100% sure of your question for urban design in this, in this matter, but I'm here to answer any questions that might, might have come up.
Thank you, sir. Counselman Dingfelder, please.
Now we're psychic, Mr. Chairman. I recently assumed... No, I recall back, a couple meetings back when the, when the, we were, I think we were all receiving a lot of emails about some cutting of downtown trees. Was that Jackson?
Yes.
Yeah, Jackson.
I'm very familiar with that.
Okay. So you got the emails, too?
Oh, yes.
And so there was a lot of cutting, and it was explained, I guess, that it was in conjunction with a development, a redevelopment that was going on adjacent to that. I think that was the explanation. You can, you can correct me if I'm, or either way, just tell me if I'm right or wrong. And then, the folks came in and, and said that they wanted to make sure that the appropriate trees were going to be, since we lost those trees, that the appropriate trees were going to be replaced. And then they had concerns that some of the trees that were going to go back in there were, were kind of, I don't know, puny, or, you know, insignificant, or what have you, as compared to, I guess, the oaks that came out of there. So, so that's the first part. The second part, I don't want to speak for Mr. Goode's, but I think he added to the motion as related to folks in his community who want to be able to trim and cut trees and, and, you know, how, how could they do that? And who do they contact? I guess that was the second part.
What was the specific question, counsel?
Well, I guess, you know, I know trees are a hot topic in certain communities.
Yes, sir.
But in portions of my district, they're not a hot topic. The topic is they're overgrown, they're all in the streets, trucks can't get through, they're all in the power lines. And it makes for blighted areas in my district versus another district. They want the canopy, they want this and that, but we don't have that. So who's responsible for cutting some of these trees that are on the right-of-way and are coming into the roadway, into the power lines? How does my district resolve some of those issues?
Tampa Electric is responsible for pruning the trees in and around the power lines. We've got a standing franchise agreement that allows them to prune those without permits or oversight, as long as they follow ANSI standards. As far as pruning in the public right-of-way, that's the responsibility of Parks and Recreation, the forestry division. I can provide phone numbers that people can call and put in work orders. I know they've got a pretty big backlog, and I can't speak for Parks and Recreation, but they're the ones responsible for pruning. ones responsible for pruning.
Well, let me speak to this.
Yes, sir.
How is it evaluated? Who goes out and looks in roads and streets to see what needs to be done, versus just a phone call? I mean, certainly my community don't know how to make these phone calls, or they're not aware of these services that are provided. So to me, if we're a city and we have a division, I mean, I'm just looking at how is the evaluation process done to look down these roads to clean up some of this?
I apologize, councilman. I can't speak for how Parks and Recreation evaluates their work order system. That would have to be addressed with the Forestry Division. I do know that they can, your constituents could always contact the customer service center. I know a lot of things are identified through that, and they responded to, within seventy-two hours, at least an answer on how to get the trees pruned, or how to deal with the problems.
Well, another problem I have, you know, when the storms come, or sometimes the hard rain, again, we have these trees that die and they fall.
Yes, sir.
And I can go to certain areas in my district where I've seen the trees have still been sitting halfway on the owner's property and the city property. And nine times out of ten, the owner in certain portions of my district can't afford to get these big trees removed. So how do we, how do we help citizens with that process? You know, I hear about, you know, we did the tree coves and all this stuff, but I don't think that we really took into consideration other communities that are less fortunate with services or can have things done. So is there a fund? Is there some kind of avenue where some of these people can call to help my community get cleaned up? Because I see trees all the time. They're halfway on the city property, halfway in the property.
If they're partially on public property and partially on private property, Parks and Recreation, it's my understanding that they'll take responsibility for the tree if you contact them.
Again, what's Tico's?
And again, I hesitate to.
What's Tico's responsibility?
Pardon me, sir?
What's Tico's responsibility? Because I had a cleanup about a couple of weeks ago, and I can see the brownness in the, from the line on the tree. And we made some calls, and Tico's doesn't respond at all there to evaluate that, and it's gone on two weeks. So I'm like, you know, how do we get some consistency? Is it because it's a different community, or is it, you know, I'm just trying to figure a way to help the constituents in my district.
I think in those particular situations, if trees are catching on fire or arcing on the lines, that Tampa Electric needs to be aware of that. And again, I can't speak for Tampa Electric, but I can certainly provide the contact people to call to get this, or they can contact me, and I can reach out to Tampa Electric to try to assist with getting service.
Does the city have a contract with Tico for work, or is it just something Tico just does on their own?
No. They operate under a franchise agreement, and they contract their own tree service.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for doing this. I sat through the presentation, I don't know if it was your department or Parks and Recreation, but the presentation a year or so ago of the study of the tree canopy.
Yes, that was our department.
Great presentation. Thank you all for doing that.
Thank you.
And the words that Tampa's gotten for its tree canopy. I used to live in Singapore, and the time that we talked about this, I'd just gotten back. You know, Singapore, in the very beginning, had a very specific plan for creating a tree canopy and trying to reduce the temperature, because it's hot like here year-round.
Trees are good.
Is, do you know, is there a, kind of to what Councilman Goode was saying, is there a plan for places that we would like to have trees, or is there a specific plan to try to create a canopy? And this was specifically about downtown, but are there plans for what we want the city visually to look like with trees?
The Urban Forest Management Plan is the twenty-year strategic plan for urban forest management in the city. It doesn't speak directly to planting spaces. It speaks more to providing diversity, maintenance, sustainability in planting areas. But no, there's no particular plan that might come from Parks and Recreation for highway beautification areas, parks, that type of thing.
Maybe that's something we can talk to the mayor's new sustainability person about, if that's the right person. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, we move onward to item eighty-three. And I know we got a word on that, and I believe no one's coming from the administration. And I know we, and you're here to speak on eighty-three? And I have no problem with that. I mean, the public comment wasn't a beginning in it, but that's all right.
If I may.
Yeah, go for it, yeah.
Last night, the mayor and I had a community meeting with the Angus Goss Memorial Pool Committee, three individuals that are here today. One was there last night, the young lady at the lectern. The mayor went over the numbers for the pool. It's actually an estimate of what they received for a brand-new pool, not a renovation, from scratch, about four million dollars, much higher than what we thought, and some of the older estimates. But this would be looking at making it, you know, state-of-the-art, ADA compliant, what this pool was not, when it was built back in, I believe, nineteen sixty-two. So in this budget that's being proposed, there's a hundred thousand dollars for a study. And what that means is looking at different avenues for funding, whether it's grants, federal, beyond just what the city has in the budget. I have my own ideas that I want to pursue about getting some funding, but that was just an overview. The mayor was out there answering questions, meeting with people, and giving just a synopsis of what this pool is about. So that was it.
And Councilmen calls?
I just want to ask you a quick question. The four million dollars, does that include the adjacent buildings, or just the pool itself?
That's the pool structure. And then the acreage is, I received a message earlier, and it is one point one-four acres, the Angus Goss parcel. This is per the property appraisal. Because folks were asking, what if there was a community center attached to it, you know, other different options? But this would, because the pool was filled in several years ago, you know, the, what's underneath the actual swimming area, how stable it is, that's one question. The bathrooms, any ADA access is non-existent because of the era. Also staffing the pool. I believe the numbers were around three fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year, because of course you need lifeguards and whatnot. But that was it.
It's Councilman Dinkfeld.
So here's my problem with these memos from staff, is we have a memo from staff which was actually fairly complicated, about three or four pages. Appreciate the work that was put in. That particular staff person's office is about a hundred feet from where we sit, but that particular staff person's not here to chat with us about this. So here we sit, and we ask each other questions, you know, which is really kind of weird. We're lucky in this case, because Mr. Maniscalco has been digging into this, but, you know, I don't, I have a specific question. He makes, Paul makes reference to the U.S. standards for pools per, you know, per X number of people. That's the U.S. Parks and Rec standard. I don't have it with me, but it's like six thousand or something like that for people per pool. But I was wondering if Florida has standards, because Florida's a different place, and maybe we need more pools than Nebraska or something like that. So anyway, I have questions like that. With that said, I'd like to carry this item over for a month or so. There's nothing urgent on it, but just so we can have a warm body here from the administration to answer all of our questions.
Okay. And want to go in and take that motion up, sir? And we'll hear from you?
Unless there's something else.
Or, you know, we'll take it at the end of the item.
Sure.
But yeah, we'll certainly vote. And yes, sir.
And maybe, this is another question we can ask, but, sorry to bring up Singapore again, but I visit a lot of community centers when I'm in Singapore. One of the requirements of the government there is that all the community centers have to be surplus or profit generating. And I haven't been to that site myself, I've had the briefing, but just wondering if in the analysis, staff could look at, is there a way to have space that could be leased out and/or purchased by somebody so that it could, so that the private sector could help subsidize it?
And Councilman Maniscalco?
That's a good idea. Another example, right up the street from the pool is the Seminole Heights Garden Center. Years ago, it was derelict. It was then restored. Now it's used as an events venue, a wedding venue, you know. It's a money generator. If you look at Julian Lane, for example, to rent the, what is it called, the River House, it's booked, people rent it, and it's something like three thousand dollars to get it, which is not accessible to everybody, but then again, you know, whatever. But, you know, it does bring in revenue. So when we talk about, you know, cost to operate it, lifeguards and whatnot, and staff, if we do look at avenues to generate money, such as, you know, building a second floor to it, you know, an event space, a, you know, wedding venue, whatever it is, that's, you know, that would make total sense.
It does. And for me, if I may, I mean, the biggest issue I see here, without opining specifically on the pool, which is a community desire, and obviously I recognize it a hundred and ten percent, which is that all communities, I think, are sort of having similar sentiments, which is that right now, we're in what appears to be a good economy. We know that there's going to be storms ahead. We read about it in the paper a lot. And, you know, that this is a good time to invest in our neighborhoods. It's a time to invest in neighborhoods that have been, in part due to recovery from a recession, neglected, something that we began to do in two thousand and seventeen, we continue to do in two thousand and eighteen, and I hope that we do in two thousand and nineteen. I know we're going to be talking about the budget, but that's certainly something that I want to see. In two thousand and seventeen, I voted for a budget that in part raised taxes. A lot of people don't like to talk about that, but I did it. But one of the reasons I did it was because I want to see a balance between fiscal management and fiscal restraint, and then making sure that communities are taken care of in the future, that we can do both things. And I hope that we continue to see that. I know we'll be talking about the budget in the future, but just my two cents. But ma'am, you have been very patient, so what do you?
There's no mic there.
You think four minutes is good, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Chrissy Taylor with the Angus Goss Committee. This is Pat and John, they come to support us. I know that this was supposed to be an agenda item, talking point, to go over the information. As Guido had expressed, we had spoken with Mayor Jane Castor and Guido yesterday in a formal meeting, informal meeting with the presidents of all the civic associations, and we were informed that the price tag was approximately three point seven million. And I guess I'm here to basically express why, even if it is at three point seven, I want to piggyback off of what Bill Carlson was saying, is that if we're at that price tag, at the location and what we are dealing with, I really would like to stress maybe making it as profit-driven amenity, maybe partnering, doing a partnership with USF, basically able to maybe make it two stories, having abilities to have events there, having the ability to make it so it pays itself back. I know three point seven million is a lot. We don't expect to get approved now. But that pool serviced the community for over sixty years, almost sixty years. And at three point seven million in sixty years, it definitely costs, I think, sixty-six thousand a year. I know the price tag's heavy now, but that's what that pool did for that community. I know the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand and three hundred fifty thousand for the running of the pool. So I basically am just trying to speak for the community that this is a very important, vital asset to our community, to not look past what it means to memorialize, to keep the memorial of a Hillsborough High School alumni vet, what it does for the Hillsborough High School community as far as them not having to commute to Copeland, what we can possibly do as far as that we're the largest district, third-largest district in Florida, and we have no Olympic-sized swimming pool. So there's also something to consider there, where we can actually invite and have regional meets. And when we're talking about this pool, I don't know if we're considering partnerships. I know we have a hundred thousand for this, to have a study done, but USF said they could probably do it for cheaper. So are we looking at what alternative sources that can do things, and also grants? So I'm just speaking on behalf of our community. I know this isn't overnight. This is going to be in our budget. I can understand this is going to be a fight for the next few years, but I'm here to express our strength and our ability to want to do things for the community. I think the residents of Tampa, especially in our urban areas, suburban areas, have seen Tampa downtown explode, and they're taken care of. Their streets are getting paved, and when you come up to Seminole Heights, it almost seems like we're kind of left in the dust. You know, our streets, I lived there for six years, never repaved. I walk out my door, I had twins, I had to walk on the street because there's no sidewalks. And I understand those are important things, but what the community feels like is that the downtown and Channel Side, those have been addressed, those have been vitalized. And now we're looking at these areas where we can now be revitalized with civic amenities, and it's almost just a slap in the face to see, oh, you can go one point two miles, especially when we're talking about transportation. And you say, okay, let's get cars off the road. Well, that starts with building civic amenities and community and municipalities within our own of walking and biking distance. And I appreciate you guys. Every one of you have met with me. You guys are wonderful. I think there's a lot more transparency, and I'm glad we have administration that's willing to work with the community and do things for us. So, thank you.
Councilman Citron?
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Yes, I've had some meetings with you and representatives from the Goss Pool. But council members, we must remember, there are two people that we memorialized, Goss and Lopez, who are national heroes. We gave them pools, we gave them parks. We need to maintain the status that we've given them. Just by not revisiting this, not by doing anything about these pools, we're wiping out their legacy. So let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
And if I may intervene, I want to say thank you, Councilman Citron, for mentioning Lieutenant or Private Baldomero Lopez. It's funny, not long ago, I was on the newspapers.com site and actually found the house where his parents lived when he was killed in nineteen fifty, next winter, and it's still there, which is really, really neat. So, yeah, yeah, it will. It's really darn neat stuff. But I think Councilman Maniscalco, then Goode, then Carlson.
You know, after last night, I got an idea. I was very quiet last night. The mayor, you know, spoke and whatnot. Looking at all avenues to raise money for this pool, you know, and you say, you know, a fight over years and getting money in the budget and whatnot, you know, and I was one of the people that voted for it, but thirty-something million dollars at Julian Lane Park. Before me, Waterworks Park, you know, downtown's getting a lot, and deservedly so. But we're talking about an American hero here. Angus Goss nominated for the Medal of Honor, did not receive it, got the next one over. Baldomero Lopez in West Tampa, of course, he did receive the Medal of Honor. But having said that, and maybe Council or Chairman Viera would be able to answer this, but why not, you know, there's Gary Sinise, right, and the Lieutenant Dan Van, who puts on these benefit concerts. I don't know if it's strictly for wounded warriors, but I wanted to reach out and contact him and say, look, here's someone who gave their life in World War II, buried overseas, never made it back to the United States. Perhaps we could partner with him, because that's a, that's a big name, that's a larger scale. But do whatever we can beyond, you know, the city and what's in the budget, beyond, you know, what grants we can get, but do it privately like this. I mean, we could do, you know, and this is just me thinking out of the box, but let's say he agrees to come down and raise money for this, you know, for this swimming pool, and does something at Sulfur Springs, you know, by the water tower, you know, great venue and whatnot, but someone who's recognized and known for, you know, giving back and raising so much money and whatnot. But that's what I'm looking at. Any different option to offset cost to the taxpayers and raise the money privately, because it's not a lot. You know, almost, you know, three point seven million dollars, you know, there's private donors, there's people that, you know, would want to put their name. I don't know if, in the nineteen seventies, with the River Walk when it began, I know there's a, under Mayor Poe, the plaque is there, right outside of Curtis Dixon, of names of so many people. I don't know if they sold planks, or sold pavers, or sold something, but, you know, there was, I believe there was an effort to raise money to start that project. But I think we can do it, you know, beyond just looking at, oh, you know, in the budget, you know, this year we allocated this. We're not going to get another BP settlement. You know, I know we use a lot of that for Julian Lane. You know, we won't have that kind of windfall. But we're not talking about a lot of money. You know, three point seven million appears to be overwhelming, but I think if we look at all different sources, you know, if we chip away a little here and there, we can get to it and get this done.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode.
Well, Jim, I have a different take on all of this. You guys, I'm very frank about what I said. You know, you've got a budget, and you look at the growth of certain areas in the city that benefit. So for me, I don't want to hear about have to find some grants and have to do this and do that. We have a budget, and we should be focused, like the chairman said, on neighborhoods right now, while we have the money. Now, we got all these other projects we want to bring for the future and this type of thing, but right now, while we have dollars, it should be merely focused on the neighborhoods, especially those undeserved neighborhoods.
Yes.
We know where those neighborhoods are, and that should be the concentrated effort right now. I've had, my community's been asking for things for years, and now we have money right now that we want to shift other places. I have a grave concern, I have a problem, and my people, they're very angry. We've asked for centers, we've asked for rescue cars, we've asked for a lot of things. We've never gotten. So to talk about looking for grants, looking for these other items, we have a budget, and we generally do look at it carefully, because you know what our commitments were in the campaign. And we, generally, we do look at it carefully, because you know what our commitments were on the campaign trail. I could go to any, uh, campaign event, and the first thing all candidates talk about, well, we know East Tampa is the focal point. But when I look at the budget, I don't see that as a focal point. I need a focal point, and I, I sympathize with you, so you don't give up the fight. I'm not giving up the fight, because there is money, and I'm sorry about other projects, but what we got to look at is neighborhoods, and I appreciate that comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Carlson, then Councilman Dinkfelder.
Uh, three quick things. One is I, I feel like I'm, uh, constantly apologizing to people for the last eight years, but, um, uh, you know, the rumor is that the dirt was put in there in retribution to the, against the activists for asking for this, and whether that's, if that's true, it's despicable. And I personally apologize if that happened. Number two is that we had a conversation about the CRAs, and some of them have lots of money and them, and don't have blight and, uh, and slums, and, um, uh, it seems like some folks in the community don't want to shut them down, but they, but there seems to be some consensus to put a cap on how much money we leave in them. And so if, at some point, we, um, if, if we moved some of the money back into the general fund, we'd have more money to spend in other neighborhoods that needed, and this is a great example of that. Number three is that, um, I've been talking to the mayor and, and staff and others about, um, using some of the sidewalk money for, all for transportation to do, um, planning in, um, in, um, neighborhood commercial districts, or creating downtown centers for, sorry, um, uh, neighborhood centers for, for different areas. You know, there, there are a couple areas in East Tampa, there, this would be an area potentially in Seminole Heights. Uh, but if we, if we had some planning money, besides 100,000 dollars to look at this project specifically, I think your vision is that, is that this will create a, a walkable pedestrian-friendly community, and if we use the sidewalk money to do a broader plan and vision for the area, then it would be more obvious how this pool fits in. Right now, uh, people might be aligned based on whether they think they're going to swim in the pool or not. But if we look at it holistically, in terms of how the, how the neighborhood integrates, and also, not just look at the, the, uh, the commercial aspect of the money coming into whatever is on that property, but, but if we turn it into a neighborhood center, uh, then it could be, we could have a much, uh, uh, you know, better, more active area than we do now.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Um, great comments. Um, Mr. Citro, uh, I especially liked your comment in regard to reminding us about who these folks were. Heroes. We've talked about heroes on several occasions this morning, but, uh, the heroism of, of those two gentlemen, as you read about what they did and gave their lives for our, for our nations, and received the medals of honors, I, I think both of them, wasn't it?
Just one, Lopez did.
Lopez, okay. Um, I think Goss was close. Anyway, um, I just wanted to remind everybody, even though this sounds like a lot of money, 7 million dollars, and it is, um, out of our capital budget, and then there's ongoing expenses in terms of, uh, operating expenses. I wanted to remind everybody that, that this city, this, this council has spent millions and millions and millions, and I'm going to get that number before we, before we meet on this issue again, renovating, totally renovating, basically rebuilding the Davis Island Pool, the Cascaden Pool, I think the Williams Pool, and maybe the Green Pool. The, you know, we've just spent millions and millions and millions of dollars. We concluded that that was important to those communities. Um, this is important to these two communities. And I know we can't do it overnight. This mayor just got elected, many of us just got elected. We can't do it overnight and come in three months after we got elected and say, oh, 7 million dollars. Okay, that's, it's not realistic, and I'm sure that's not what the folks are asking us to do.
I think it's a 3.7.
Let's set, times two.
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
But, um, but what we can do is really push hard for next year's budget. So assuming the economy stays good, our budgets stay good, let's work hard on this over the next year and really make space for it in next year's capital budget.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? And, and just in, and, uh, and sir, did you want to comment as well?
Yes, I did.
I don't mind, come on up, give you, give you a couple minutes. You, you stayed.
Machine work right now?
I don't know. Let's try.
We'll find out.
We'll give you three minutes, go for it.
Yep. But every Saturday, I go up to this pool, uh, park right now, and have a sign that says, Save the Pool, and hope that other demonstrators come out to show their support also. But they, it looks like it's, the city is taking more interest in maintaining it, various areas of it, or, I don't know, did that come up? Uh, of being beautified, but the building itself is being neglected. I mean, it's a dump inside, and I don't go to Sulfur Springs, and they have a beautiful mural around the water pump station there. This thing is just begging for a mural to beautify it, as well as the grounds themselves. Uh, I went out and volunteered at the American Legion, and Home Depot, I don't know how many thousands of dollars they put in there with materials and help to, to beautify it. So, there are sponsors out there that would help to beautify this more than what it is, but I think it's going in the right direction. But 100,000 dollars to study it, I mean, think what 5,000 dollars could do in just plants to make it look better. So, perhaps an idea that maybe there is some money, or maybe the Parks Department could beautify it more than what it is now. And I'm thinking myself as an art, I'm not an artist, I'm not Michelangelo, but if one of the mural painted on it, I could paint it. But I'm sure there's better people that, uh, could make it look more beautiful. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, we appreciate that, and, and just a, a couple of brief thoughts. With, with Valdemar Lopez, I would also encourage folks to go, if you've never gone to the Veterans Park off 301, there's a really nice memorial there to him. And by the way, do y'all know who was credited, he's got a big memorial out there as being the leading force in building that memorial out there, a man named Jim Basta, who is the grandfather of Joey Ruth, who was my intern, who just finished, uh, yesterday, in fact. So he was a, a great guy. And, you know, uh, one thing, I know we're, uh, you know, talking about the budget, talking about certain things. I also want to, uh, I'm a glass-half-full kind of guy, I guess if you will, which is that, uh, the money is in there for the study. That's the genesis of it, that's the beginning of it. You never, at least my experience has been, get construction money in year one. You got to first do the study, uh, see how it's going to be done. So that's, that's, if, if I may say so, something of a victory, you know, I, I, I think, in my opinion. You know, but again, the bigger issue is neighborhoods and making sure that we focus on our neighborhoods. I know next week, we're going to be having a, a workshop that I motioned for for Bush Boulevard. I'm looking forward to doing that, I'm looking forward to asking, uh, the folks who are presenting. When they talk about the crises in Bush Boulevard, okay, great. What's our budget going to reflect as a response to the crises of these very ignored people? In a couple of weeks, they have parks and recs coming, and I'm, and I'm sure, not just by report, um, to, at least, they're going to be here in person, we're going to make darn sure, on the issue of our, uh, parks and playgrounds, and making sure that they're all, uh, accessible to children with, uh, uh, special needs, developmental needs, physical needs, et cetera. So, you know, I'm sure that this is going to be part of a larger conversation that affects all of our city, and will certainly play a part in it, so, thank you. Okay, next we move to item number, oh, and Councilman Dingfelder, you had a motion on this, sir, about moving it?
Yes, I, I think, um, I, I know I had a few more questions, uh, for Mr. Dial. I'd like to move this, uh, this item for additional discussion, uh, a month from now, approximately, Mr. Shelby. September 19th.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Niskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we move onward to item number 84. Oh, this is, this is going to be continued, correct, sir? Okay, have we done a motion on that yet?
No, you haven't.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Goode, did you want to do a motion on that, sir?
Motion to do.
Okay.
On which one?
Uh, item 84.
Oh, and that was, and that was to which date? I'm sorry, September 26th? The workshop?
So this is the one, this is the one that I, I wanted to move to our, to our water workshop, which is, I think, August, what is that, next week? 29th?
You have, yeah, but I, I believe the motion made reference to the fact that on the 26th, you have a workshop, um, regarding the wa, uh, staff report, excuse me, on the workshop day. Water and wastewater department to provide a report pertaining to potential use of impact fees and other funding options that will assure new development residents are paying their fair share of water and wastewater.
Right, and the reason I brought that up, thank you, Mr. Shelby, is that it related to, uh, this entire issue of, of tap and pipes, et cetera, et cetera. So, to be better informed, I'd like that information to us next week at our, at our water discussion. So that, that would be my motion, um, to, we can continue it from today, but continue it till, um, till next week at the water discussion.
If I can, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, sir. And by the way, I wanted to apologize, I, I looked at Councilman Coote for the continuance, uh, Councilman Dingfelder made it, so my apologies, go ahead, Marty.
The concern about that motion, um, Councilman Dingfelder, is twofold. Number one, it's a one-week motion, and number two, it may not give the staff enough time. It certainly, it's difficult to give the clerk enough time. Uh, it doesn't keep the item from being raised next week, obviously, during the discussion.
Well, with all due respect, this, this item was originally raised by me in June.
Yes.
So they've had all summer to re, to research impact fees, and it was due today. There's no particular reason why they're asking for a continuance. I need that information next, next week.
Understood. Thank you.
Want to, so how about we make it as a motion to, you want to continue it to next week?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a second. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Niskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, next we move to item 85. And we have a memorandum. Any discussion on the memorandum, thoughts?
Memos and memos. But no debate.
No. Okay. Does council need time to look at the memos, or move on to 86, sir? Okay. Uh, next we move onward to item 86, and Mr. Snell.
Tom Snell, uh, Director for Planning and Development. I did submit that report, and I gave you the copy of the pertinent sections of what your options are. Long story short, you have the power that you need right now to designate different structures, landmarks, cigar factories, districts, uh, already in the code. So, I, I sent that specifically, so you can have a chance to look at it. And then, what it happens, um, sometimes this conversation comes up, uh, every, every few years, um, about how they can do different kinds of protections that are historic resources. And so this information has been in the code for quite some time, and it's really up to council on the direction they want to take in terms of executing those code provisions.
Hi, Rachel Peterham with Legal Department. Um, just to clarify the process, I can describe the process if you'd like. It would basically be based on an application being submitted, um, to the Historic Preservation Commission, that if, to use your example of the cigar factories, if an applicant in the city council could do that through motion, be an applicant, and say that it wanted to look into, um, creating a multiple properties designation for the cigar factories, then that would go before the HPC. It would review it, and then it would, after having a public hearing, would bring a recommendation to you for, um, you all to go ahead and hear and make a decision upon.
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you have any idea how many cigar factories there are out there that aren't designated already?
I don't have that information.
I should have that information, but I don't. Um, and Dennis had to take care of an emergency with the, um, with one of his staff members. I'm going to imagine there's probably six or eight, and that number is an absolute guess.
I wonder if.
Several of the cigar factories, none of the cigar factories in West Tampa, although it's a, a national district, it is not a local district, so it doesn't enjoy, um, um, the local code reviews like, like the cigar factories in Ebor City would. The Prefecta Garcia is just outside Ebor. It's in, it's in the, again, the national district, but our local codes saying how you have to rebuild it and, uh, how it has to look, uh, only takes pay, takes place if it's in, within one of the local districts where the guidelines apply. So the Prefecta Garcia is out, cigar factories that are in West Tampa are out. Uh, there's a cigar factory down in, um, Palmetto Beach that is out, that's not in very good shape.
I wonder, you, you mentioned that, what's it called, the Historic Preservation Committee? I wonder if we should have a workshop and have them come to us with a recommended list of structures that we should apply. You said city council can apply if the owner of the building doesn't apply, city council can apply?
Well, the, the process is that any applicant can make a request for something to be designated as a historic landmark or, um, multiple property designation. So you could by motion submit that application to HPC, and then they would go ahead and have their public.
I don't know who the expert is that would come back to us, whether it's that committee or, or some other expert, but it would be interesting to have somebody's recommendation as to what, uh, citywide, what, what the priority of buildings would be that should be preserved that aren't already.
Yeah, I don't know that the committee could come before you with that, but I think Dennis Fernandez could come before you as staff for the HPC, the administrator, and he could go ahead and give you information about the other cigar factories that might be out there that don't have that designation.
Okay, Councilman Citro, Dingfelder, then Niskalko.
Thank you. Talk, talk about the 500-pound gorilla in the back of the room.
Back of the room?
Yes, in the very back of the room. Section 27, sorry, gentlemen, sorry, the section 27 dash 257, the criteria is landmark. What authority or what power do these codes or these, these landmark design, designations would help us to decide on whether an historic cigar factory can be painted or not? Would this give us any leeway, ask council, to, to dictate?
Painting?
Yes.
The guidelines, well, it would depend on the guidelines that are drafted as a result of that. Right now, painting is not one of the things that is controlled in the local districts. And that's been debated several times, about whether or not they should control the colors or, and that kind of thing. So, right now, in the local districts, the colors and the painting of structures is not controlled. But I would, I would imagine that if you have a brick facade, um, as most of the cigar factories do, if you did something to, um, impair that facade, that you could probably apply some, um, ability to control that.
Because that, that 500-pound gorilla, most of us have gotten emails and telephone calls on, and verbal discussions about, um, how a historic cigar factory should be maintained in, in, in its appearance to the neighborhood. And I'm trying to figure out how we, as a council, can ask builders or mandate builders, no, you can't do certain things to building. Is that, is that within what we're talking about?
The HPC could go ahead and bring you standards and guidelines with its recommendation.
It, it's just as Ebor City has its own specific DLC guidelines, Hyde Park has their own specific guidelines, Seminole Heights has their own specific guidelines, and I believe also does Tampa Heights. And the local districts, they're, in, in many regards, are very, very similar, but depending on the, 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 the date of, um, significance or the, the time of significance, that'll dictate certain other kinds of structural and, um, facade treatments that have to take place. Clearly, Ebor City is way different than Hyde Park.
One last statement, actually. So the most, one of the most historic areas in our city, West Tampa, doesn't have this form? That the other parts of the city does?
Correct, sir. It's, it's a national district.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Um, just to fill in a couple of blanks, um, these buildings did come to council, um, back in '04, or '04, something, somewhere right around there. And, and, um, without getting into the details, they, they, they kind of begged their way out of the process. Speaking of process, Mr. Carlson, the, it's a really good, solid process that's already in place. Um, we don't need to reinvent it, in my opinion, because it's a very public process. Um, what we could do is, I think step one is to ask Dennis to produce a list for us of the buildings, um, the cigar buildings that remain that are not protected. When he comes back to us, let's say, two weeks from now, with that list, um, we don't need to evaluate that list, because it's really not, it's a little premature. What, what, I think what we could suggest with that list is, okay, these buildings are unprotected. Let's throw them all to the, to the Preservation Commission. Let them do their detailed evaluation, because that's what they're there for. It would be a very public process, so the owners, some of whom I know have contacted me and probably you to, to say, don't include us for a variety of reasons. They can make that argument to the commission, commission can evaluate that, then. Commission can evaluate that, then, then the commission will make its recommendation to us. And then, we will have another very public process. And again, they can take another bite at the apple and, and urge us not to be in or to be in or what have you, and the public can participate in either one of those processes as well. So that's my recollection of how, how it worked from two thousand and four, and I don't think it's probably changed much since.
No.
Would you agree with all that?
I would, yes, sir.
Okay. So with that said, if, if you, somebody else wanted to speak, but other than that, I'll, I'll entertain, I mean, I would make a motion just that Dennis come back with that list.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, I'll wait until we do.
Okay. On a, on a separate but related note, the other day, The Times, again, Paul Guzzo, wrote a story about the Guida House in West Tampa. And yesterday, I met with a, it's like a preliminary committee of, you know, different community leaders, looking at what we can do to restore, preserve, and move forward with that house. It sat vacant for thirty years. The city owns it. This is not a private property matter. And I wanted to see about making a motion at the end of this meeting requesting that although this house is on the national registry and has been since two thousand and six, that we designated, you know, a local landmark or put it on the local preservation registry, whatever, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, would we not be able to apply for, for whomever, for different grants to help with the preservation and restoration and whatnot? When you're locally designated, what, what difference is there than being, you know, nationally to locally?
The local designation comes along with it requirements in terms of you have to meet, you go through a design review process, which means you sit in front of the, one of the boards of DLC, the ARC. They opine, they judge on making sure that you are doing your exterior work in conformance with the existing and adopted design guidelines. They have protection of code. The national district does not have the same types of local design guidelines. They recognize it as a national district, and it's, and it's more in name, it's an acknowledgement. And as, and as the local districts can, you know, either expand or contract, most recently, Ebor expanded a little bit a few years back. They, they brought in more of some of the stuff that was north of the interstate. The biggest difference is that the national designation doesn't provide you architectural protection.
Okay. So when I make this motion at the end of this meeting, would I request legal or just Dennis Fernandez to look about putting the Guida House? Because separate from, from these other properties, I want to move this one quicker.
If you make the motion for Dennis, Rachel will show up by default.
Okay. That's great. So since you're, since you're here, I want to, we'll make that motion at the end. Let's say September fifth. It's, it's pretty easy because there's one property and it's a city-owned property. So we don't have to deal with private property owners and whatnot. So thank you for the clarification. You know, I don't know if, an RFP was put out ten years ago on the Guida House, and of course, ten years ago, we were going into the Great Recession, economic collapse, so on and so forth. I graduated college and it was, there's no jobs, you know, go, go wait tables. But now, the situation is different. The newspaper article was very helpful because there was a great response to it. And I think now with the Renaissance in our city, with the growth in West Tampa, with the new homes being built, with banks lending and financing being available, and people in better financial shape, you know, I think we can move forward with, with this one property. Cigar factories, you know, I'm going to support, you know, whatever we can do, you know, to protect them. I call them our castles. You know, we have buildings that, that you don't find elsewhere. So having said that, I'm glad we're having this discussion. We're touching on a lot of really important issues. Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, and I just wanted to touch base, one other thing. Tom, with all due respect, the, the, when the subject earlier came up about painting, I know Ms. Sutero was specifically making reference, obviously, the gorilla in the room, was the painting of the exterior, the painting of that brick. And, and I kind of feel like that that is something that we already regulate. You can't, you can't go into historic districts in Hyde Park and, and-
Hyde Park has a local designation.
Well, but, but the buildings themselves, if, if we had a cigar factory, let's say in Ebor City, that's protected under our local ordinance, you can't paint the brick, I don't think. That's my recollection. But on the interior paint, no doubt, you can pick your own colors, interior, probably, and get away with a lot. The exterior, I kind of, I think we need to be careful on that one. But anyway, going back to my motion, I'll make a motion that on September fifth, staff, Dennis, or whoever, come back to us with a, a list of the unprotected cigar factories in the city of Tampa.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder. I believe a first, second by Councilman Carlson, tied with Councilman Guido Maniscalco. I'll, I'll give it to Councilman Carlson. If I, if I may.
No, whatever. Tie goes to the runner.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next, we have item eighty-seven. Yes, sir. And you're asking for that to be continued, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
There's the workshop days in, 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 in December, so we're giving plenty of time to make sure you've got-
Good information to bring back.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Goots, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, our last item is eighty-eight.
Tom Snelling, Planning and Development Director.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Snelling, I apologize. We needed to move to receive and file the documents for item eighty-five. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I know I, I've sent you this report before, but I just had to- That basically outlines the process, but when I went back and reviewed the tape, I got the minutes from the thing. I found that Councilman Goots had more concerns, and not to speak for you, about some type of notice procedure. And that's where your concerns were. So now I'll just listen and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council?
Yes, sir. I, I guess my, my main concern is with these demolitions, and definitely within the residential area, the, the process that will alert residents that this is an undertaking that's going on. Again, I was summoned to the community by a lot of activists and residents of a couple of demolitions that occurred, and what I saw was like mind-boggling. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what our policies were and reverse that demolition and the notification of residents near a school, daycare. I mean, you're talking about adjacent house that you're demo, that you're making a demolition. You've got this stench, you've got debris, no, no proper water. It's, it's being pulled onto the, the dust and so forth. And I seen that a couple of times, and that just brought, raised my concerns.
You are correct. There is no, in our current codes, in our current process, there is no public notice requirement. And we do have requirements for, your example about the water, and I know the Tampa Water Department provided that they can either do a truck or they can tap into a hydrant nearby or some other source like that. So the, the water is, is there provided. If, in the case that they were demo, demolishing it, they probably should have been posing it down to keep, to keep the dust and debris somewhat contained. So that, that's my only real answer to that. Now, on the notice, on the notice, like I said, there is no specific required public notice, so none, none is taking pla, is taking place, whether it's to a resident next door or daycare, schools, churches, what have you. When they are doing or staging actually in the public right-of-way, they have to get a maintenance of traffic, an MOT. But detouring the folks around, closing the sidewalks, you know, you come downtown every day, all those detours are maintenance of traffic requirements. Demolition's when they also stage in there, and sometimes, depending on the size of the demolition, it's quite a large, they have to bring in large equipment, and sometimes they'll stage into the street and work from the street to, to clear the site. So other than any kind of an MOT, there, there really is no other notice.
Is there a code inspector or somebody to come out on the first day of the job to make sure that they're in compliance with these things? I mean-
We do, we, we do a pre-site inspection. My division does. They'll go out there and they'll, they'll look to see how they're setting up and whether, if there's trees on site, that they have the proper tree, tree barricades protected to make sure that they, you know, they have, excuse me, access to the water. They do the pre-construction, like we do with all construction jobs. They do a pre, a pre-demolition inspection to get the lay of the land and make sure that the site is protected. You know, where they, if they have to put up silt, silt screens for protection so stuff doesn't run into the street or into the neighbor's property, to make sure that those types of things are up. Then, once they do that, we go back after the demo is done to inspect that the, the, you know, there is no dangers that, you know, if there's rebar or something, there's not rebar sticking up out of the ground that they kind of forgot to take or, and that the, the slabs are cleaned and leveled and all the debris has been removed from the site. So we do a pre-construction inspection and a post-demolition inspection.
I'm just curious, because when I went out to that one scene, I didn't see any of that you were talking about. I just saw this, this company demo on a property. You got a house that's right here, right there, and you're talking about screens and all that. I didn't see this kind of stuff. I seen these guys out there, two sites, themselves no mask, no hard hats, hard hats, no real barricades in the road, especially on, on the strip of twenty, twenty-first, which is the main thoroughfare. And that, that's what p, some of my concern, why it was unseen, with the residents calling about it. So I, I'm just hoping that we, we can come up, hopefully with some policies, or, or we have to make an order regardless to making sure that we're noticing the public when these things are occurring. I just think that's important. You're adjacent to schools when these demolitions are happening. It may not be that rare, but when these things come up, we have to address the issue when they do come up. And I think it's very important that we have to look into that.
Yeah. Just a quick comment on, in terms of the workers, the demolition contractors, with safety goggles, hard hats, bright-colored vests, those kinds of safety things, leather gloves, that's on the contractor. They have, they have their own liability and their own OSHA standards that they have to follow. And if they're not, and they're just letting their contractors walk around with sneakers on construction sites and they're not have hard hats on, shame on them because they, they dramatically are increasing their liability. But we don't, we don't, we don't enforce OSHA standards on private contractors.
But I think we need to make sure we enforce our policy to where we're sending out a notice to the public that demolition is being done, especially if you're in a restricted area and you've got schools and things like that. I think the public needs to be aware that that's happening because you've got debris flying everywhere. And I just think that's just a public safety issue that we should be alerting our residents to.
You would probably have to put that in a form of a motion.
I will.
And I, with all due respect.
I will.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from council?
We'll do that then.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Okay, now we move on to motion and new business. Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Yes, sir. There's an organization that was started based out of Tampa. It's called the Akila Group, A-K-I-L-A-H, by the Davis family, Elizabeth Davis, who's the daughter of Cody and Beth Davis. A wonderful organization that is building schools in Africa, especially for young women. And they're, they're coming up on their tenth anniversary. Specifically, they're, they're building in Rwanda, which, as you recall, had horrible genocide twenty years ago. And that's one of the things that attracted the Davis family to, to that area to try and help, help the country and help the young, the young women, many of whom had been orphaned by that genocide. Anyway, with that said, I'd like council to present a commendation, or I'll present a commendation to the organization at their tenth anniversary celebration in October.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor? Any opposed? And, and Councilman Dingfelder, was that, was that organization profiled like ten years ago in a newspaper article?
Sure.
I remember that article. Yeah, yeah. And God bless Cody. Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful thing. They've now graduated, I think, probably several thousand young ladies who, who were just out there doing great things and, 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 in, 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 in that part of Africa that needed a lot of help and is getting some help. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Goots.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to amend the motion. On June twentieth, twenty nineteen, I made a motion for the Legal Department and Administration to examine the proposal of creating a reentry ordinance for the city of Tampa and bring back option recommendations to council on September fifth, twenty nineteen, under staff reports and unfinished business. At this time, I'd like to amend that motion to change my motion by asking the Legal Department, Ministry, to bring back their options and recommendations to the city council workshop on October twenty-four, twenty nineteen. This will permit a discussion on the issue, which I think will be helpful and productive.
We have a motion by Councilman Goots, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. In a form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like the, the Construction Service and Legal Department to come over to ordinance and reverse the notification of demolition within the city of Tampa.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
We have a-
Sixty days?
Yeah, at least sixty days. That will be next regular session. What is it? That'll be fine.
October seventeenth, then, under staff reports?
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Goots, I believe, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything, sir?
This is-
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, first, I'd like to congratulate our new deputy chief, Ruben Delgado, who's been promoted from District One Major, Tampa Police, now he's a deputy chief. And in his place is Major Carlos Rodriguez, who will now-
Carlos, huh?
Yep, yep. He is now the major of District One, also known as the Champagne District.
Yes, what's called.
Anytime I do a, anytime I do a police ride-along, they always apologize. Oh, there's not much going on here. Wish we could show you more. But anyways, congratulations to them. They've served quite a, quite a while and, and very well in their capacity. So that's that. Second, I'd like to make a motion, and I discussed it a few minutes ago, for September fifth, if, I believe, you know, someone with Historic Preservation, or Rachel's here, with legal, to come back at looking at designating the Guida, the George Guida House, a local landmark, you know, or put it on the, the local registry. It's on the national one. But putting it on the local will be more helpful in regards to restoring it, restoring it properly, and the guidelines of how the exterior needs to look and whatnot so we can preserve the character of this very unique mid-century home in West Tampa.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it?
Okay, Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, last Thursday, I attended a groundbreaking at the German-American Club in Ebor City. It was fantastic. Councilman Maniscalco was there also. However, I did miss my training that is required by state law for council at that meeting, which Councilman Goots and Councilman Dingfelder were also at that conference, which was a great conference. We, I found out that no matter how big or how small cities and municipalities are, we all have the same problem, same issues. Especially, and I won't draw out much on this, Tallahassee overriding local rule. There, I said it. However, because I missed that training session, I moved to ask city council attorney to come back at the next regular meeting on September fifth to provide options and prospective dates for city council members to attend an annual four-hour of training required by state law in the areas of ethics, public meetings, and public records. Now, I'm asking, can this be done in four hours in one day or two hours over two different days? That is my motion.
And I guess the question for me would be to get a consensus of council as to whether council wishes to have this scheduled for a, a, a one-day, four-hour trek or two days, two hours each. And we could schedule on, on an afternoon, or we can schedule on another day, whatever. I'll, I'll work with the chair, I guess, it's fine.
Thoughts of council?
But any thoughts?
What about, this is the, the annual ethics, ethics training that we're required to do, correct?
Yes, by the end of the year, December thirty-first.
Now, if we were to watch video, you know, on YouTube or anything else from the Florida League of Cities, whatnot, that would-
That, that would not-
That meets the requirement?
Well, legally, yes, but I will tell you that that has not been updated since, I believe, two thousand and thirteen, or two thousand and fifteen. The law is changing dramatically over the course of this year. And I do, I do these presentations throughout the state for the Florida League of Cities.
And I do, I do these presentations throughout the state for the Florida League of Cities, the local regional leagues invite me in. The last one I did was in Winter Haven. And I do it in a four-hour shot, and, and, and then maybe the Sun Coast League, you know, would get involved in that, I have to, I could check with the Sun Coast.
Now, I remember one year, was it at Sunken Gardens, or was it in Largo, or was it that, that they offered this four-hour course that, you know, that, that's within a reasonable distance that we could go to?
I can look into, I can look into options for that as well. But I will, I will tell you, I will tell you that waiting for December and relying, the, the question is, do you want to fulfill the law, or do you want to get the benefit of the training, is, is the point? Because I guess you, technically, you can watch something that you've watched every December 31st, but the law, I will share with you with regard to public records, with regard to training, and with regard to ethics, excuse me, public records, public meetings and, and ethics, is rapidly changing. And the beauty of doing it, if there's, if there's a silver lining to the cloud of having to do this every year, is that the law is changing. And it's to your advantage to know what that is, so that you're protected.
I, I think for date-wise, I mean, we probably have to discuss, but does, so we, we can watch this on video, I guess? Not, not this, but-
I don't, to my, to my knowledge, there may be a course online, if you'd like me to look into that, that is actually, comes with a test, that you have to free section afterwards, and I believe that's done by the, the daily institute of government through FSU.
If I watch 10 episodes of The West Wing, will that come in?
Well, The West Wing is a little bit out of sync.
Councilman Dinkfelder.
So, in regard to attention deficit, which perhaps I suffer from, I, I definitely would go for two, two-hour sessions. And I think there are subjects where you could break it up.
Absolutely.
And the other part, I, I wonder about Marty's, can you use your Broadway background to make it a little more entertaining?
I have gotten, I have gotten great reviews from the leagues of cities throughout the state, from Volusia County through, I don't know where-
Little song and dance, perhaps?
Uh, no, but I try to, my goal is ultimately to keep people awake, because that makes it more effective.
And I got to leave in about seven minutes, just FYI. Should we vote on this, or?
Well, just to bring it back.
Just, it was just a motion.
Motion to bring it back.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
No, no, next week.
Next week, next week.
Okay. The ayes have it. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
September 5th.
Okay. Councilman Carlson.
Okay. Two quick issues. Number one, and these are both related to constituent requests and complaints, one of them is that we've had a lot of complaints about boats being parked on the right-of-way in place of where cars would be, and, and that's considered a nuisance. So, I'd like to make a motion that a representative of the Code Enforcement Legal Parking and Planning Zoning Department appear before council during council's workshop on 10/24 to discuss potential code changes to Tampa code section number 15 regarding the parking of unmotived vehicles and the enforcement aspect of these potential code changes.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Or, what are, what are you asking for?
To, to discuss the possible code changes to, to address this issue, because apparently there's nothing specific, and Kristen just left, but apparently there's nothing specific in code to address this issue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And also, if I could just make a quick comment, boats on the right-of-way and stuff, that's a complaint that I've gotten. Anytime I walk into the West Tampa sandwich shop, oh, what can you do about the bow with? And then Code Enforcement will say, you know, they're parked on a public road, they're parked on this, but it creates-
And motorhomes, too.
You think about ambulances trying to come through, fire truck, they can't fit, I mean, I can barely fit my car. So, I can understand the frustration, I'm glad you brought it up.
So, another one, last week, we were inundated with complaints about flooding, and there are various causes of flooding. But you all who were here before remember that when the stormwater tax was approved, the first thing that stormwater people did is they went and cleaned out the gutters that were full of years of debris. And there is a current, current ordinance related to dumping of debris, but there is nothing specifically related to leaf blowers. And I'll, I'll bring up this issue and see if you all will, will, will address it. There are several issues with leaf blowers. One is the, the environmental impact of gas leaf blowers, there's this noise issue which we've heard complaints about. And then there's the filling of storm gutters with, or culverts with debris, which is illegal already, but there's, but the way the code is set up, it's not easy to enforce. So, I'll throw this out there and see how you all react to it. I make a motion that a representative from Code Enforcement Legal and Stormwater Services appear before council during council's workshop on 10/24 to discuss potential code changes to Tampa code regarding the usage of gas leaf blowers, the dumping of lawn debris in stormwater drains and, or culverts, and the consequences that result from this dumping of debris.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay. And now, I'm going to hand the gavel over. I have a few motions to make, so if you all ever have a lot of motions, don't ever let me motion shame you, because I'm, I'm saving all mine, unfortunately. So-
You need it all seven minutes for yourself.
Exactly. Unfortunately. A couple of things. First off, I wanted a motion to have a commendation for Titus O'Neil and his many good works in his new book. Further, that said commendation be awarded on September 19th here at Tampa City Council.
We have a motion. All right. I heard the second first from Orlando, Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Second, I motion that Colonel DJ Reyes, who I know, Councilman Dinkfelder knows from his work in Veterans Treatment Court, come and give a five-minute presentation before city council on September 5th regarding the Veterans Treatment Court Coordination Act of 2019, and the status of this great program for our new members.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera with a second, I think I heard it from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Third, I, I had motion previously for Radiant Kitchens, an organization that provides assistance for refugees from various areas such as Syria, to receive a commendation, I wish to set a date for that, to be October 3rd of this year here at Tampa City Council.
Motion from Councilman Viera with a second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Three more. I motioned that a commendation for ABC Gulf Coast Chapter on their 50th anniversary. Further, that said motion be presented at their event on September 13th.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera with a second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, I motion to invite University Area CDC CEO Sarah Combs to present on the CDC's Neighborhood Transformation Strategy at city council October 17th.
Second.
Councilman Viera has a motion with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Before I became chair, I was the bane of poor Franklin's existence.
And I was just going to say, you're getting him back now, aren't you?
You know that? And then, and then lastly, this is an issue that I've been looking into for a while, not, not long ago, I, I went with my son to kind of have like a civil rights trip of, of Mississippi. We went to various places, we took a look at the Mississippi Delta, and while we were there, we also got as much of a look as we could at the Mississippi State Penitentiary, otherwise known as Parchman Farm, Parchman Prison, back in the day, which after Reconstruction, when African-Americans were arrested on very frivolous claims, and then essentially put to work for the state of Mississippi so that they could begin to have revenue in their, after their crippling loss after the Civil War. And, and that kind of led me to the issue of, of prison labor, something that I, I have found very fascinating in our country, and, and just looking various options that the city can do in terms of taking, I guess, a moral stance of solidarity in an issue that I think when we look at it 50 years from now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, we're going to go, what the heck were we thinking? In terms of letting this crippling policy to go forward. Therefore, two things, I motion for resolution encouraging local government entities from Tampa City Council from contracting with companies that would use prison labor for profit, prison labor.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Viera with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Oh, yes, sir.
What are, we're aware of, are we aware of it as a problem? I'm confused.
In terms of, well, local governments have, for example, the city of, it wasn't Gainesville, yeah, it actually was Gainesville, recently cut off all ties with organizations that would use prison labor. So, yeah, it certainly is something. And a lot of private companies, for example, do it. We're not just talking about companies that directly contract for that, but private companies that are mainstream businesses that use those services.
Because, I know we don't have a lot of time, but, but I'm just, there used to be an organization called Pride.
And that's a public sector. I specifically in here put private sector for profit. Yeah, because I didn't, I know that there's a lot of public sector entanglement, so that's why my motion was specifically for private sector ones, because I don't want to get into the pride issue, for example, at this time, so. So, you're 100% employed.
Wouldn't impact the sheriff, I don't think it's forced labor, but sometimes, I've seen in Pinellas at least, the sheriff uses prison labor to do some roadwork and that sort of thing. I, I think that's voluntary on the part of the prisoners. They, they get, they make like a dollar an hour, but at least they're not sitting in their jail cell-[1657.58]